And reduced head loss, it gives you a lot more bells and whistles for leak detection, tamper, empty pipe alarms, things like that. It also gives you a better warranty compared to most other meters on the market. So, and it's actually better priced than something like a bronze body mechanical meter, because you don't have the low lead concerns, you don't have the cost of materials. So that iPerl actually has a 20-year warranty on battery and electronic components. It is a full 15-year warranty, and then a five-year prorated warranty after that. Does that make sense? The next leading competitor is 10 years full, 10 years prorated. So, I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily trying to sell you on the iPerl, I'm just telling you what you have currently. It is the best on the market, and then on top of that, it gives you a 20-year new meter accuracy warranty. So if you take that meter out in year 19, test it, and it fails an accuracy test compared to AWA standards, you get a free meter. Any questions?
Is this remote read?
So, it is, it is capable of being anything from a touch read, visual read, or, you know, drive-by, walk-by-drive-by, even fixed base. So it is compatible with all those different reading methods. Your current process for reading meters is, well, it's a bit of a challenge, to say the least.
So we've heard.
Trust me.
I'm sure, I'm sure you're familiar with it.
Every quarter, every quarter.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Paul's fallen because of it.
It's dangerous. I'll get into all those, right? So, the process now for JCO is to walk up with this device called a, well, we call it a pocket reader, but it's a $30.96 plus. It's that little device on the left-hand side. It holds 10 readings. You walk up and you scan a little black button on the side of the house, which is connected to the meter inside in the basement. You get a reading that's displayed on that, on that little pocket reader with the ID number of the meter and the reading, and that's it. They write that down in a notebook, and then they manually enter that into their billing software. So, because of this process, it's time-consuming, it's dangerous, it gives a lot of points for human error, whether it's the writing it down and transposing numbers, sloppy handwriting, things like that, you know, weather conditions that ruin your notebook, and then on top of that, entering it into the billing system, you could be entering it into the wrong account, you could be transposing numbers.
We also, we also have the old-school dial readers, too.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, I would say 70% of them probably are those right now, which are sun-dated, they have moss growing in them.
Yep.
You can't see them all. The dial gets stuck, and then you get a bad reading, and then you have to go inside to get a reading.
Then you're estimating them.
Then you're estimating them, or, you know, it's a lot of time spent in the background.
Chances are that they're connected to an odometer.
Do they go bad?
The touchpads?
No.
No, I think they have like a 25-year warranty on them. Not, I think it's 25 years. I have never seen one go bad.
No.
If you have odometer wheels on the side of the house that, that you're reading, those work off a technology called pulse. It's a pulse output that's sent from the meter, so every time that gallon wheel clicks, it sends a little jolt of electricity, and it turns the wheels on the odometer outside. If, if that meter is using that technology as very old as it is, so I wouldn't be surprised if the meter inside has stopped working. I wouldn't be surprised if the register is no good. On top of that, the odometer wheels on the side of the house almost never match the odometer wheel on the inside of the house.
So they go bad?
They go bad, yep. They don't, they don't necessarily receive that signal. All, all sorts of issues with that, right? So, I have seen where, when folks do a change out and they go from something like that to a new, modern system, they have to talk about how they're going to handle these enormous bills that some residents may receive, because it's been years since they've had an accurate reading.
And it's also a loss to the billers.
More key.
Well, I mean, well, all this time.
Yeah, I can go over that afterwards, this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the next method from using a pocket reader in that, that iPerl meter, right, is to do something called AMR. AMR is automated meter reading. So, you would have this handheld computer that you see up on the screen, and it will be preloaded with your route, all your service accounts, the address, the account number, the previous reading. You can have all that stuff displayed on that handheld device. You walk up with this other device called a autogun, that scan jewel on the, on the left-hand side. It scans the touchpad, and it automatically transfers the reading into that handheld computer. When you get back to the office, you dock the handheld computer with your desktop, and you pull all of that information, all of that data, back into your billing system. So there's no chance of human error. The nice thing is, is you can utilize that equipment, go into a radio read system as well, and you can kind of do this phase deployment, where you're doing some touch read and then popping radios on and getting those via radio read. You can also manually enter the data into that handheld device for those cases of manual reads when you physically have to look at the meter. So you can walk up, see the reading, punch the number in, and then you don't have to worry about transposing numbers, you don't have to worry about the human error aspect when it goes back into billing.
Can you have more than one of those computers with you, or?
Yep.
You can have more, like, you have, because we have, like, we deploy like three or four people at a time.
Yep.
Out to reads right now.
Yep.
So there's three, three or four managers.
Yeah, so you could have, if you wanted a couple of different handhelds, you can send, you know, one person with one, one with the other. They have the same book of accounts on them, and then when they come back to the office, it merges the readings into one file. So, the problem with this is it, where it is accurate, right, and you reduce human error, and it is a little bit less expensive than other options, you know, it's still very time-consuming for your folks out in the field. It's faster than using a pocket reader, but, but it's still very time-consuming and dangerous. You think of weather conditions, dogs, angry residents, things like that. I've been with folks doing training out in the field, and I've had someone come out of their house with a shotgun when I'm with the water department, and it's not a good feeling, right?
I've had two dog bites this past two years, so.
Can they wear ID?
They, they do, they wear, they, you know, lights on the truck, all, you know, badge trucks. My truck doesn't have.
He doesn't pass.
So, another step forward from touch read is, it's still AMR, but you would utilize a radio transmitter at each one, one of the locations. So we refer to this as a walk-by-drive-by method. You can either walk the route, or you can drive down the street and collect your reads. So you have a radio that simply clips over the touchpad that's existing, and same idea, that handheld is loaded with a, with a book of accounts, and you click start reading, and you drive around, and it sends a signal, and it collects, collects reads. This is really efficient, it's really safe for your employees, other than, you know, troubles on the road, right, that type of thing. But it is a huge step forward. I typically have folks that have, we'll call it 500 services to 4,000 services using this method, because it is safe, it is efficient, and it's relatively inexpensive.
I have a question.
Sure.
So when you have the handheld device, do you have to click a button in between houses?
Nope.
Okay, so you just put it on your dashboard, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, hit start reading, and you can drive around and collect reads. You can then go back through that route, and you can see what you haven't received, what accounts are missing reads, which accounts have alarms on them, and that's another issue, right? When you're going out with that pocket reader and you're reading, you know, via a touch read, you're not necessarily getting those alarms, whether it's a leak or a tamper, empty pipe. You know, I, I don't know how many times where I've deployed an AMI system, or even a drive-by system with these new meters, and, and they come back and they found multiple houses that have removed their meter from service and put a jumper. So you got seps, non-revenue water, yeah.
So, what would stop, is there anything that would stop, or, or read being read? Fence, trees?
So, so I have, I've only seen a few instances where maybe the tree is literally right against the house, and they just squeeze the radio on the right, right behind it, right? You might have a little trouble there. I've seen where, if they're in a pit with a cast iron lid, and a truck pulls over and parks on top of it, and you can kick the signal out. I've seen issues like that. It's not really a problem with, you know, your walk-by-drive-by method, because as you're driving up, or driving through your route, you might see that the address is still listed, you haven't gotten a reading. You can just stop in front of the house and wait a minute, and it picks it up, and then just keep going.
How far does it transmit?
So it really depends on building density, topography, things like that, but I've seen quite a long distance, half-mile, you know, or more, several streets over. So, one unique factor for Sensus is, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, is it utilizes a primary use frequency, and then it utilizes up to 2 watts of power, which is the strongest in the industry, okay? They're the only ones that can, that can transmit at up to 2 watts of power via the FCC, and they're the only meter manufacturer on the market that has a primary use frequency. So there can't be any other interruptions. No one else will use that frequency.
Wait, how much would it help you? The difference between this one and the one before?
Yeah.
Not yet? Okay.
We're just gonna swing you out.
Okay. That's what I know.
To put in the hook in there.
There you go. I want those, I want it up front.
So, the next step from that would be a full-blown drive-by system, where you have a radio transceiver in the vehicle, antenna on the roof, a laptop computer mounted in the vehicle.
So now you're paying for trucks?
Yeah, so, so you can, you can move, you can remove the device, and you can put it in any vehicle. I've put it in my truck to do demonstrations, things like that. But the, the really nice feature of a full-blown drive-by system is, it is more powerful, all right, and it will have longer reading distances, and it gives you GPS mapping. So when you're out in the field and you have 200 meters that haven't come through, you can look at the map, and you can see where those meters are located, which is super useful. So, but, you know, as I mentioned before, I have a lot of customers that are 500 to 4,000 services. It's not a really big footprint. You're talking two and a half square miles, right? Like, you probably know your streets, you probably know the addresses and the street names. It's not going to be that difficult for you. And if it is, you can always jump up that next step if you want to in the future.
We can, okay.
Yep, yep.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the transceiver, is that in a vehicle owned by JCO, or a village? You know, when you're looking.
It could be in your vehicle.
Yeah. I've, I've connected to these in my Subaru, and like, we drive by, but it is nicer to be in the village with the village truck at the end to drive around.
Yeah.
Safer way to do it, because people, because you'd be driving slow still, and people would be going around you making sure, like, oh, it's the village, don't worry. It's like, it's a lot easier to do it in my Subaru, getting yelled at by people.
Yeah.
I assume you drive your Subaru, you have to go slow.
You swing up the damn whole room.
With? Easy system.
Yep.
Does the homeowner have access to their own water usage?
So, no. You would have to go, well, for what I'm proposing, though, if you wanted the residents to have, like, a customer portal where they can view their usage, I can get pricing on a third-party piece of software that will work with it. But the problem with that is, you're only getting the data as often as you read, right? So it's not going to be in real time. So if you do reads every, you know, once a quarter, every three months, and when they log in, that information's not going to change unless you go back out and do preliminary reads. You know, maybe you want to do that once a month, so you can show them their trends. And that's fine, I have customers that do that also. If you want real, near-real-time data, you would go to an AMI system, and that's advanced metering infrastructure. Sensus calls that system FlexNet. So you would have to invest in a radio antenna that we typically would install at a water tank, and then it would continuously monitor your system. So you would get hourly usage from your meters, and your residents could have a customer portal. All your alarms are in real time, so as soon as an alarm is triggered, it will come through in your system. It's constantly monitoring, it's extremely easy to use, and it communicates directly with your, your billing software. So when it's time to do your billing, you just log in there, pull a file, and, and drop it on your CIS billing software.
So without going with this system, let's say there was a leak in the house.
Yep.
Water softener.
Yep.
Would we be notified?
So when you do your readings, you will get a leak alarm.
Yep. Only, only when we do the reading.
When you do the readings, if you're doing the drive-by method. So I did talk about the radio for, for a minute there, and I just asked, how do you know it's a leak? Uh, it's continuous flow. So, the way the iPerl works, let me, let me back up. Traditional leak detection would be if you had consumption every single hour for 24 hours, right? The iPerl literally monitors, monitors if it's continuous consumption, not just a, you know, odometer wheel that flips every hour, because if you technically flushed your toilet every hour for 24 hours, it would trigger a leak alarm. But the iPerl will recognize that the water has stopped, okay? So it needs to be continuous for 24 hours, and it will flag it as a leak.
I think one of the questions that we've had, just getting the equipment. So if we were to go, going back to your first and second slide.
Yep.
And then when they bring in the other piece, I think you said it could be a leak myself.
Yep. Yeah, so, I mean, that, that talks to, my readability is what we call it. I don't even know if that's a word, is that a word? But that's what they call it. I'll put it up there anyway, right? So.
Sounds pretty good.
Sensus has a building block mentality, where you can start very simple with your pocket reader, and then you can go to an automated touch read system, where you have the handheld and the, the touch reader, and then you can simply clip on one of those radio transmitters right over the top of the touchpad. It's got a cut, cutout on the back of it, and it, so it clips over the touchpad, and you activate it, and you're off-running with radio read. You can utilize that same investment in the meters and the radios, in your handheld equipment, when you go to drive-by, and then on top of, if you go to fixed base. So you can utilize all that past investment as you grow the system, right? And if you were going to deploy this yourselves in-house, I would say, my proposal was to, I guess, purchase the radio read handheld equipment, as well as a touch reader, you know, for another, I think it was like $1,500 for the touch reader itself, right? And the software package that supports, supports both of them, and then you can kind of phase that deployment over the next several months, or a year, or whatever it might be, right? Once you get that all set up, if you decide, you know what, we've got extra money, we've got grant money, whatever, maybe we want a full-blown drive-by system with a laptop, I would say, I would seriously consider going to a fixed base system, because the cost difference isn't tremendous for the equipment. The cost difference is going to be in annual fees, but you'll get a lot of that money back with your additional customer service aspect, right, your, your ability to be more proactive than reactive with your meter reading. You'll have all of your alarms at your fingertips. You can send JC out fixed problems instead of to read and then discover problems and then go fix problems. So it's going to make things a bit more efficient. So the differences between like a drive-by and fixed base would be, fixed base, you're collecting all of that data from the office, from anywhere that you have internet connection, really. So you can log in on your phone, you can log in on your tablet, your desktop, from at home or from at work. You get all of that information in near-real time, and then also the amount of data that's gathered is incredible, right? Think about the fact that right now you get one reading every three months. With AMI, you would get a reading every single hour, all of the time, and you would get all of the alarms associated with each account as well, if one is triggered. You also have the capability of adding on acoustic leak detection, pressure sensors, turbidity sensors, chlorine, three-state valve valves. If you own streetlights, you can tie that into the network. There's just so many possibilities. With AMR, you get that information as often as you read, right? You have the risks associated with performing those readings, you know, to your employees, the JCO. You don't have the customer service aspect that, that you were speaking about, you know, having the ability to log in and see the hourly data, to set up your own alerts if you go away, things like that, and then limited expansion capabilities. You can't tie in those pressure sensors, flow level, tank level monitors, three-state valve valves, anything, right? You can't tie any of those things into AMR. Those are some of the products that I was talking about there. The acoustic leak monitoring that goes on your main lines, and then it sends alerts into the software, so you can see if you have leaks on the distribution line itself, not just at the resident's house. Questions? You're not sleeping.
No.
So the homeowners can only check their usage if it's the radio tower one?
Yeah, I mean, like I mentioned before, you can, you can set up a third-party software.
Oh, yeah.
Aqua Hawk, I think is one that we've used in the past. But again, the data is only as good as often as you read.
One supporter.
And then, and then like I mentioned, I do have customers that read, you know, every month. They don't bill every month, they still bill once a quarter, but they read every month so that they have that data.
So right now you install two of yours?
Yeah, right around there.
Which ones?
The Sensus, the iPerls, the newer ones.
So as we get meters that are broken or made to read, we replace them with iPerl. That way we're ready for this transition. But when you do it full-term, a full, full force, you do them all in one shot, that's, that's where we get talking to hiring someone to do that for you, because that's a lot of time consumption. And they are very good at this. I, the Village of South East, actually, I worked with them. They did it, implemented, they were done within like a year. They have like 1,000 miles, almost like 1,600 people done in a year. So that's them scheduling, them putting it in, testing it, and then we either will come out with them and program it to the outside read, and so you keep your location, get your setup, and Donna will have the availability to download it right there. You do it that, that's, that's the best way I've seen you do it. It's more efficient.
Chris, so let me ask you a question. When you go change a meter because it's bad or faulty, whatever, what do you do? You turn it off in the curb box?
Yeah, so usually, we've tried, we, hopefully the homeowner has good working valve valves inside.
But they probably don't.
They usually don't. Then our next option is curb valve outside. If that doesn't work, then we have a scot-free freeze kit for us. So we have a freeze kit now, we freeze a pipe. The homeowner can even set up their plumber to come in and change their valve valves on.
Otherwise, you leave the faulty valve, valve valves in?
Yeah, yep. You have, yeah, because that's, we tell them that we recommend them to change it, but it's not our, it's not our.
So you just strip them through the meter?
Yeah.
Even if all the valves are shot and bad and don't hold?
It's not our, it's not our saving of your, your houses. But we do tell people, you know, should check out, we should have pressure reasons on, and we tell them the full line, so.
This could be the time that, that flow event.
And that's, that's another, that's a huge, so, actually, I have to seek out and discuss this. There's some major restaurants, and you know, the minor, they have backflow dimensions. Those people don't have the certified annual tests, and now we start coming down on them. As a builder, saying, hey, this is tested, or else, you know, you can continue to have water if you don't want any of this kind of stuff. So, all this kind of stuff is all good for us, though. I mean, I, I've crunched a lot of numbers, as I do every year. I like data, a lot of numbers. This year, we lost on account of war, or leaks, or, you know, hydro flushing, 28.66 million gallons as well. So, and if you do, if you do that math, it's roughly between 150,000 to 180,000 dollars lost, right?
And that was one year, you said?
Yes, this, this year. Last year was more. We replaced a lot of units last year. So, you know, that helps. But it's a lot of money, and it's on a daily.
The, the amount that you gave, is that water rate, or is it sewer tip?
That's just water, yeah.
Yeah, think about sewer as well, that's a good point.
That's just $6 per thousand gallons.
What's, what's your sewer, is it?
Well, we also had.
One and a half?
Yeah, one and a half.
He goes, you had one fire. Okay, smoking.
He did, yeah, why ever written that?
Sleeting, smoking. No, it is.
It's a lot of, but no, it is, it's a serious, and Department of Health, last year we had a pretty substantial difference last year. This year it's better, so we're on the right track at least. But they do still see 28.6 million gallons. Where is that going? Are we leaking? Are we, which this is even better, because if you have this kind of technology, if you know, okay, the homeowners don't have crazy leaks in their house, then you can say, you have a leak in the system somewhere. That's, we've never been able to do that. That's even, that kind of, that's kind of technology is something I've pushed across.
Well, because if you go to radio read, it will cut down, like, even the walk-by-drive-by method.
Yeah.
It'll cut down the amount of time they spend reading. So they could, in theory, go out once a month to gather that data, to, to ensure that they're catching leaks and tamper, things like that. You can take a more proactive approach, and you can set up notifications to your residents, right, if you wanted to do that. You could send out letters to, to try to mitigate those issues. The, the other thing that Chris and I were speaking about earlier today was, the iPerl actually stores 90 days of data. So you can, you can let your resident know that they may have a leak in the house, and then you can go, he already has the equipment, hook up to the meter, pull that 90 days of hourly information, and you can show them when that usage is taking place. You can show them that they use, you know, a gallon every single hour for 24 hours, and you can say, okay, you do have a leaking valve valve probably on one of your toilets, something like that, right? So you have that ammunition, if you will, to go back to a math. Otherwise, what do they do? They say, no, there's no way, I had a plumber here, they checked everything out. Trust me, I've been in houses where they complain about it, and they tell you there's no leaks, and they've literally turned off the toilet in the bathroom, and I walked in and I'm saying, and I say, why is the toilet turned off? Turn that valve, and the thing just starts running, right? So you have all that ammunition, that, that ability to prove to them that there is a potential issue.
Even the stuff to water softener?
Yeah.
Water softener, that's a huge.
Yeah, the water softener.
It's like, honestly, it's like the number one thing I teach guys when I'm approaching their houses, water softener, five hours, check that, you know, it's kind of, the toilets, the laundry, you know, all that kind of stuff. Underwater softeners, also, they, they, it's catching open, or stuck open.
Yeah. We need to change the meters at the water.
Yes, that's, we might talk about it.
Chris, if, if the meter that goes out working, does none of this does?
The meter's calibrated, so that's, we know those are working. But to get the same plane as Sensus, as we would definitely buy, you know, a big six-inch meter for us, and that can tie into this, or we can say, you know, Donna can even look and see how much water we produce. And that would say, okay, well, we used this much chlorine this year also, and you can track how much pounds of water we use, for how much, when we use that hydromethan. So it's, it's good stuff to have.
When you start, when you start collecting that data, I always say more data, more happy, right? When you start collecting that, and you start comparing your master meter to your residence meters all combined together, right, and you see that discrepancy, you go, And you see that discrepancy, you go, okay, well, there's a discrepancy between these, you know our meters are good, um, because you have the Sensus iPro. And you can then start looking at your distribution line. You can then start looking at, um, how much chlorine is being wasted in, in that situation, right? Pumping costs, all those factors.
All right, so.
So my proposal to you was kind of a more, it's a basic approach essentially, but it is a huge step up for you and starts moving you in that right direction for a pretty, in my opinion, a reasonable amount of money, right? It's, um, less than thirteen thousand dollars for the equipment to get you started in the software and that's going to alleviate a lot of issues. In that package is your touch reader, your handheld computer and the software to utilize that equipment. So, um, then on top of that, where the real money is, is going to be your radios, right? Um, if you, typically a radio is a hundred and ninety-five dollars, we'll call it, for a radio transmitter. I put together a bundle for you so that you could purchase them in increments of two hundred if you wanted to. Um, and you would get a price break of a hundred and forty-five, seventy-four per radio.
About the same price you gave us last time?
It went up ten dollars, I'm kidding.
So, what are you looking at per resident?
So, if that's just for the, the radio itself, if you wanted to go with, let me find it here.
The last time you met, we met, you had the, the iPro was one seventy-five. The, the Coopler, I think that's the way you pronounce it.
Touch Coopler?
Yeah, it was one forty-five. The installation estimate was about a hundred and fifty. And then there would be a two, twenty-five hundred service that we pay every year.
Yes, yeah, so there isn't, so there's an annual cost for support, um, with your software. You only need it for the first year. After that, you can decide whether or not you want to continue. I fully recommend continuing that support because.
But those, those, those big things, the iPro, whatever that C board is and installation, it's four hundred and seventy dollars.
Yep.
And then that's not counting the gun, the, the dock, the software, that's separate. For the, the machine part, the reading part that goes into a home, it would be four hundred and seventy dollars per home, right?
Yes.
Or per reader, not necessarily per home.
For, that's your meter and your radio, essentially.
Right, right.
Your meter device and, and the radio transmitter, right?
Four seventy.
Should I?
Yeah.
How was that?
If, if we, if we take the numbers he just gave and we talk about the water and sewer that we're not collecting, that's four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in water and sewer fees, on the old rate, not the new.
Oh, I'm sorry, so I have the package too, just the page below, 'cause.